Good evening, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the November 12th Committee of the Whole meeting to order. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to all of our meetings, both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. We're looking over our agenda. We've got a public comment and then a single agenda item, COM 0077, the 2025-2026 budget deliberations. So we will start with public comment. So members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, you'll look for the raise hand icon if you're on a computer or smartphone, or if you're on the phone, you're going to press star three. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So I will take a moment and ask the clerk if we have anybody signed up or indicating a desire to speak.
Yes, Council President, we do.
Okay. For those making comments, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, if you're virtual, you're going to unmute your microphone, or in person, you'll step up to the lectern and press the button so that it lights up in red. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. So clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Council President, Judy Eklund would like to speak to the committee.
Great.
Judy, if you push the button there on the base of the unit. There we go. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and all of the council members here. My name is Judy Eklund, and I've been a resident in Issaquah for 15 years, and I've volunteered for the Downtown Issaquah Association for 12. In fact, this afternoon, I was out putting pink decorated shoes in the planters to promote our Legally Blonde that opens tonight. And we need more shoes. If any of you have any heels in your back closet, please let me know. So volunteering, I have had the experience of meeting so many wonderful people and residents because Downtown Issaquah Association is inclusive. We want the residents, the people that live here, that work here, the people that like to visit here. We want them to be all comfortable and come back, and they do. And in volunteering downtown, I meet lots of people from other areas that wish they lived here. And I'm also able to promote businesses. They comment on the flower pots. Thank you for doing that. And I said, well, thank the Grange Supply. Thanks Squawk Mountain Nursery because they provided the plants. They want to know where to get a glass of wine. They want to know where to get a greeting card. Then I have the people that come through that just come here to walk around because they like it so much. I have a friend coming to visit over the holidays. I said, well, let me check the calendar and see what's going on around here. She's only visited one other time. She said, oh, well, I just want to stay in Issaquah. She said, that's like a Norman Rockwell experience. So I asked the city to continue with their funding because I like the Norman Rockwell experience, and I want to continue this. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Do we have somebody else signed up?
Yes, we do. Leilani Ash.
Okay. Thank you.
Leilani. Pardon me.
So hi, I'm Leilani Ash, and I am a resident here in Issaquah. Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me speak. So I have been a volunteer with Downtown Issaquah for three years. Forgive me if I tear up. It has become such an important part of my life, and not just for me, but for my family of 13. I am the only one that lives in Issaquah, and they're all wannabes. They spend nearly all their time in Issaquah when they're not working, helping volunteer with the Downtown Issaquah Association, whether it's the Issaquah Goes Apples. My 15-year-old granddaughter is, in her words, she's the owner of the Apple Press. She is the one that knows how to run it. My four-year-old granddaughter will hand out stickers and long cards and anything else that she can hand out to people just to meet people and be part of Issaquah. To my 40-year-old daughter, who this Christmas season will be an elf on Up and Down Front Street. Along with my brood of 13, I also bring into town, not me, but Downtown Issaquah and the programming, Fenders on Front Street, Confluence Music Festival, the Gas Station Blues, various friends from Northern California, who come up and will stay two, three, four nights in Issaquah and enjoy everything from Fens Bistro to Capri Cellars to Big Picture, all because of the programming that comes from Downtown Issaquah. We've had nine people just in the last three years. No, I have to, I'll take that back. Six people in the last three years move from Northern California to be close to Issaquah, whether their jobs are in Issaquah or the surrounding area, but all of their time is spent with our programming that the Downtown Issaquah Association is providing, which happens to be free to everyone, regardless of their social status or their financial status or their age. The Gas Station Blues, regardless of your age, bring, come on down and enjoy the music. It's free, and it's wonderful. A great day to go over to Levitate and grab a burger and fries and bring it to the Gas Station Blues and sit with your family and have a meal. So my request to the city councils, please consider continuing the funding for the Downtown Issaquah Association so that we can continue bringing in people from out of state, out of town, out of county, even our own residents right here to help them enjoy everything that the Downtown Issaquah Association provides. So thank you for letting me speak today.
Thanks, Leilani. Anybody else signed up to speak?
Yes, Council President, Corby Kessler.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Council Member Victoria Hunt. I just wanted to reiterate what we've heard from our volunteers. First of all, DIA is not an island unto itself. What it is, is the community. Our volunteers, our businesses, they all comprise what Downtown Issaquah Association is. We do not have membership fees. We're not a Chamber of Commerce. We bring the voices together so that everyone has an equal voice. That's just a little backdrop. I want you to contemplate $30,000 as an investment into Downtown Issaquah Association, which would help keep everything alive, music, arts, engagement, activity, liveliness, people in the streets, bring in pedestrians into the businesses. $30,000. In addition, $90,000 back to the city. If they invest $30,000, they get a return from a tax incentive credit program, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. I really want to think about what would downtown look like if we did not have that activity? We've done a lot of surveys, and in those surveys, people from all over come, you know, from Redmond. We don't have a downtown. We want to come to Issaquah. It's historically hip. We've branded that as a community based on the voices of everyone. Again, our businesses, other organizations, other nonprofits, the government, the city. We are all DIA. We're proud of our hometown. We want to continue to generate revenue for the city by helping our businesses. And I can tell you, talk to your constituents. Ask them, what do you need most in downtown? They'll say, activity. Bring its people. People don't come just because nothing's happening. Every weekend, you will see people in the streets going into our businesses, our businesses saying things such as vendors on front. It's the most important day of the year bar none because there are no other restaurants. They line up, they go into our restaurants, and they thank us profusely. That's just one example. There are so many more. Our downtown is our pride and joy. It makes Issaquah special. Let's invest 25 cents on the dollar, an unprecedented program because we're a Main Street program, that people who are not Main Street do not have. Invest $30,000. Get $90,000 back that we can keep in our city rather than putting it in the mail and sending it elsewhere. So please, talk to your constituents. Find out what they need in the downtown. How do we keep it moving lively instead of just a thoroughfare? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Corby. Do we have anybody else signed up to speak?
No, Council President, nobody else has signed up previously.
Okay. I noticed we have two people who have joined us since I started. We're doing public comments. If either of you would like to address council, if you've got some comments, we would be happy to have you up here. Are you interested? Great. One at a time, or together, you guys can come up to the lectern right there. We've already got the microphone on. You'll tell us your name and kind of your relationship to the city, and then you'll have five minutes to make comments. So at this point, we've got an open public comment, which is just what you were hearing from other residents. So if you have something to speak on, that would be great. Otherwise, we're going to go into our meeting. We'll probably do like an hour-long presentation, well, half an hour or so, and then some questions from us before the next public comment opportunity. So just want to give you a chance if you don't want to stay that long. Come on, we don't bite. We're really good. Come on up there. So just state your name, your relationship to the city, and what you have to say.
Yeah, hi, I'm James. I'm just like a senior at Issaquah High School, and I wanted to attend this city council meeting in particular to like pose a question because I saw on the website, it's talking about, I can adjust it, budgeting. It's talking about budgeting for the city of Issaquah. And I had been speaking to a lot of people at the Garage, like that youth nonprofit cafe right near the community center. And a lot of people there are people from like lower-income backgrounds who live in the Issaquah area, or at least if in like the Issaquah School District. You know, they commute to Issaquah High School, and they stay around in Issaquah at least, you know, five days out of the week. And through speaking to people there, a lot of people were expressing like concern over public transportation and like what the future of funding for it might look like, especially with the Metro Flex program and along with the recently, I'm not sure if recent, we could say a year is recent, but some of the like canceled bus routes like throughout Issaquah. And people were just expressing a lot of interest about what public transportation and what like funding for it might look like. So that's why I wanted to come here today to kind of pose a question on what funding can we expect for like public transportation in Issaquah or if that is a more of like a county-wide question? But that's what I have to pose.
Fantastic. Thank you for your comments. I'll just say, we don't have the opportunity as a council at this point to respond, just like we didn't do to the other residents. But I want to let you know that if you want to start a conversation, you can email citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov, or we will be speaking on that topic and more later. Would you like to make any comments? I promise, we don't bite. Okay, great.
Hi, I'm Jenna. I'm just a resident here in Issaquah. I've been living here since I was eight. Yeah, I just have the same concern. I've talked with students at the Garage, again, like predominantly lower income, who said that they'd heard rumors that like with new budgeting for city of Issaquah, there might be like a cutting of Metro Flex entirely, or there might be like more cutting of bus routes. And I just wanted to like reemphasize what James had said, which is that like there are low-income people in Issaquah who do need the Metro Flex and do need like public transit. So I know you can't respond to that right now. And like, or to try to dialogue, you might need an email or such. But I hope that there can be like productive conversation and like these programs which are like really fundamental for people in our community can like remain.
Thank you so much. We always appreciate hearing from residents and understanding what's happening with you guys, just like we heard earlier from the DIA volunteers. Anybody else indicating online a desire to speak?
Council President, nobody online has indicated a desire to speak at this time.
Okay. Well, again, we always love hearing from our residents. We heard from three people from DIA, two volunteers, just about the city funding issues. And then we heard from two students about the advocacy for Metro Flex and kind of what the impact and what the availability of the budget would be. So thank you, guys. At this time, we've got our one budget item on the agenda, which is COM 0077, the 2025-2026 budget deliberations, presented by Andrea Snyder, the Assistant City Administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. With me here today, supporting cast to really do the bulk of the presentation for us, I'm just kicking it off, but we have Public Works Director Emily Moon, Community Planning and Development Director, Minnie Dollywall, is joining us from overseas, and also Administrative Services Director, Autumn Monahan. But I will kick us off. So the purpose for today is to follow up on some of the issues, there we go, follow up on some of the issues raised by city council at the October 28th Committee of the Whole regarding the 25-26 proposed budget. So specifically, those interests that seem to be, to bubble up to the top for council were Metro Flex, the Light Rail Study, the Housing and Parking Studies, as well as the Fleet Fund. We got a lot of questions about each of those items. There are many more questions we received from council. We have attempted to answer those in the packet for you this evening. If you have additional questions or follow up on anything that's presented to you in the packet, please let us know. Of course, we're happy to provide any information that you desire, but it seemed like these four issues really rose to the top for the most of council members, so we wanted to spend some time today addressing them. The direction needed for today is really just asking, are you, is council, does council agree with the administration's recommendation as presented in the proposed budget to cancel the city's contribution to Metro Flex, postpone the Light Rail Study, postpone the Housing and Parking Studies, and also to keep the Fleet Fund budget as proposed? So those are the four questions really for today on addressing each of those four items. So with that, I would like to welcome Public Works Director Emily Moon.
Good evening, City Council. So I'll be following up on some of the questions that you have posed about Metro Flex and providing a little information about the service to date. So the first slide shows weekday, weekday-only rides per quarter. And I'll point out the obvious. It's been on the rise since we first started, which was to be expected. Has been leveling off a little bit as we have stopped pushing as much marketing for the program. There was a big launch where we saturated the community with signage and social media and other means of communicating the new service. This is a similar trend, as you will see on other slides as well, that King County has experienced and other communities that have started up Metro Flex. So our weekday rides per quarter, last quarter that we have data for through September, was 43 rides per weekday. In terms of ridership, we have also seen pretty similar pattern, real uptick in the first, from the first quarter to the second quarter of the service. Our ridership has increased pretty steadily until this last quarter, where it sort of leveled off a little bit again. And shared trips is an objective of the program to ensure that we have efficient use of the system. There's a sweet spot for shared number of trips and number of riders that can be accommodated certainly with each vehicle. So we are hitting the target that we have thus far. Love to see that higher, but again, that's partly about demand, partly about resources as well. And so our shared trips have remained fairly, fairly constant. In terms of wait times per quarter, we've seen that be fairly consistent as well. One thing that I will note is shortly after we had started the service around that second quarter timeframe, Metro Flex added a fourth vehicle to service Issaquah. And that was in part because of the demand that they were seeing, but also hoping to make sure to hold constant on wait times and make sure that they were servicing the whole service area, having that availability of a vehicle. There's also some questions that we received about who is using the service. It's a hard question to answer. We have a lot of anecdotal evidence, but Metro Flex does not require anyone to submit demographic information as they book a trip. They don't collect anything as someone enters one of the vehicles. So we don't have that. But we do have some useful information, I think, in the heat maps that we get on a quarterly basis from Metro. This is just an example, week of October 21st. We think it's a good example because it shows a pattern that we see repeated throughout each quarter. You can see our top destinations are to transit centers, the Transit Center and the Parking Ride in the Highlands, Issaquah High School, Talis, which is in a multifamily area, multifamily housing area, and Issaquah Commons. But you can see single dots spread out throughout town. The clusters that are darkest in color, that deep purple color, those haven't really changed over time. In some cases, they have become more intense. You actually have to aggregate a little bit with your mind's eye a bit. If you see the Issaquah High, there's several circles that are that rich color, but you'd have to kind of combine them to see the overall usage there. I can also share just a little bit of that anecdotal evidence about who is using it. I think the heat map speaks to that. You've got shoppers. You have folks that are living in some of our higher-density neighborhoods. You have high school-age students that are using this service quite a bit. So some of that anecdotal evidence that we have is some feedback that we received as we went to various boards and commissions last spring. We heard from Human Services Department as well in the city that they were receiving a lot of feedback from riders about how valued the service was. They told us at that time that their biggest benefit was in accessing Old Town and Gilman for shopping, also the Commons area for shopping. And they said Metro Flex has improved access to businesses within Issaquah that were not previously accessible via bus, particularly basic needs in downtown Issaquah area, and that they were receiving a lot of feedback from students that they have used it to take trips to grocery store and also to the food bank and other locations in downtown and along Gilman Boulevard. Lastly, we also have received quite a bit of feedback from Issaquah School District staff who have, from time to time, reached out to us and have voiced appreciation for the service and even more so a desire for more of it to service different neighborhoods, but also different hours of operation, different days of the week.
I was going to say, I think we've got just one more slide on Metro Flex, but go ahead. Good question.
It's on the map, so if that's all right, thank you. I just wanted to confirm, while there are multiple dots at multiple places in Talis, and you have Talis multifamily, I believe that the large purple dot, which is the highest density of ridership, is Rosecrust at Talis, and I just wanted to confirm that.
That's correct.
Okay. You also asked some questions about current funding. I'm confirming for you that we have cut $525,222 out of the biannual budget that would have been used to fund the city's share of Metro Flex. I also wanted to give you a statistic. The city's cost per trip then averages out to $27.24, or at least it did for the most recent quarter. I spoke earlier about the fact that we have about four vans in our fleet on average. You know, the county shifts resources around to meet demand, so at some moments in time, we actually could have one more vehicle. We could have one fewer. When our contract was established, we were paying the equivalent of one van's use, one operator's time, in essence. And so the city has gotten a little bit more out of the county over the last year as they have had to try to meet the demand in our community. We did approach King County, and we asked about their ability to help fund the city's cost share for the second year of the contract. They are not able to do that. Again, we're midway through this two-year agreement. We have provisions, of course, to terminate, but they have already established their provision of service to our community and other communities and did not have available budget to put toward this program. I also wanted to share that King County has been very consistent in their response to us, that they attempted to negotiate in good faith and offer this program to the city to help meet the needs that they saw in our community. They wanted to be partners with us. We spent quite a bit of time over the years trying to come up with what is the best way to service our community, especially after cuts to bus transit. And we jumped the queue in a way because we had been having those longstanding discussions with them and because of the reductions in bus service to our community and others. King County had established, after implementation of Metro Flex and after they began seeing a lot of jurisdictions have interest in the program, they reestablished some criteria for expansion of the program. And that expansion criteria is called their service guidelines. And that really speaks to their desire to ensure equity in service, particularly attention to equity priority areas. So those are areas in our region that have higher density of low-to-moderate-income residents, provide access to jobs and community assets, and their... provide access to jobs and community assets, and their second tier is really about meeting communities that want to partner with them. So we were sort of that second level criteria when they, they agreed to help us start this program here. I also understand that City Council has asked some questions about why Samamish doesn't contribute, and I think we've addressed that before, but to reiterate that, their program started much earlier than ours did. And again, the way in which King County was thinking about service expansion differed a little bit at that time, but the primary reason why they are servicing City of Samamish without a contribution from the city is because they have had a more significant reduction in transit services than the City of Issaquah, and still to this day, they have fewer transit services than the City of Issaquah has. And that's anticipated to continue in the near future. Lastly, I wanted to provide some background on the consolidated grant that we have applied for, knowing that it's always good to try to get outside funding. We tried to put our name in the hat for this WashDOT grant that's passed through Puget Sound Regional Council. And this grant would help us to offer Metro Flex for a two-year period running from July 2025 to June 2027. So the grant would cover about 90% of the city's costs. There is a requirement for a city match. Our city match would be about $59,000. And we won't know if the city is going to be awarded that grant until May of 2025. However, there are steps to this process. We will get a little bit of information back, we think, at the end of November. Not enough to count on fully, but a good indication of the likelihood of the city to receive that grant, and we'll certainly be keeping you informed of that.
Director Moon, before we move on, since I know the next one is light rail, I think we've got some interest and questions about the Metro Flex program. So Deputy Council President De Michelle, followed by Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Emily, and thank you for your outreach to Metro. Was there any discussion? It says there's no additional available funding for year two of the contract, but was there any discussion about future funding beyond the two-year period and any indication that there might be funding in the future?
No, we, we didn't get into that topic. That would certainly be a topic that we would need to engage in about another five, six months when we are ready to renegotiate, hopefully years three and four, if we are going to continue this service.
Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Council President. Couple of questions. Can you go back to the map for a second? So I'm struck, can you help me understand why there's so much more ridership in the Highlands than there is on Squawk Mountain? Because Squawk Mountain is one of the places that historically we've said that the lack of transit is, is particularly difficult, and yet it's essentially unused on Squawk and it looks heavily used in the Highlands. Can I understand why?
Yeah, and I could only offer sort of my subjective opinion about why that might be the case. We don't, of course, have any survey to share as rationale for that. What I can say is if there was a neighborhood that received a lot of marketing about the service, it was, it was definitely Squawk because our intention was to provide this service where there was a lack of transit service. And so we focused very heavily on both Squawk and Talis. My personal opinion is perhaps the residents that live on Squawk have gone without for so long. There are a lot of households, therefore, that have private automobiles, and that's the dominant nature of how they get around, where Highlands, for example, since very early time, has had access to bus routes, has had the park and ride. So that's, that's just my best guess.
Yeah, it's funny because, I mean, we have lots of also folks who are aging in place on Squawk that could potentially benefit. So it's just surprising and disappointing. My next question is, when you talked about ridership, and I think you said it was approximately 3,000 per quarter in the most recent, how does that compare to a bus or set of buses? Like, order of magnitude, how does that compare?
It's a great question. I don't have that statistic for you, so I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Next question is, you said it was $27 per trip. Do you know how that compares to buses? Like, how efficient is this compared to bus travel?
That's an excellent question, too, and I would have to ask Metro to help me to calculate that.
Okay. And then the last question is, you mentioned about Samamish and Samamish having started a program sooner, but isn't, and forgive me, I don't understand funding for Metro as well as some, but they're only partially in the tax district that pays for transit, are they not? Or am I confusing that with Sound Transit?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So, and yet they, they get it fully covered even though only some of their folks pay transit. No, seeing head, head scratches, no?
Hi, Councilmember Mart. So you were correct when you said that a portion of them are within the Sound Transit taxing area, but they all are a part of King County, which King County Metro is a King County service.
I see. Okay, so different, different funding setup. Right, thank you. That was my question.
Councilmember Ray.
Thanks, Council President. Do you know what share of the total cost of Metro Flex we're paying versus what Metro's paying?
I don't have their total cost of service. There are substantial costs that we are not sharing in, so you can't just logically apply that math of one vehicle, they're providing four, therefore we are paying 25%. It's far less than that for the actual cost of the service.
Far less, which way?
Sorry. Metro is paying more than 75% of the cost.
Great. And then on the, the daily rider numbers by quarters, so the 43, so that's, that's rides, not necessarily riders, so assuming people are going to and fro, so likely, so 20 people a day is sort of is where we're at right now, 21-ish?
I, I think that's possible. I think what we have on, on here. Yeah, those are, those should be, the ridership per quarter slide demonstrates one-way trip counts.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, let me ask that again. I did a quick background math. The 30, the 3,018, if that's quarterly, if I divide it by 13 weeks in a quarter and five weekdays, that would get me 46 rides. So are we estimating? Yeah, I'm just confused because one's ridership and then the other one is weekday rides.
Correct, so excluding Saturday rides.
Yeah, but rides versus riders. So if somebody is a to and fro, two trips, would they be counted as one, two rides but one rider?
They would be counted as two rides and one rider, I guess, I believe so. But the ridership, the ridership statistic, again, includes Saturday data.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay. Any other questions on Metro Flex?
Well, no, I just want to get some clarity there because the math doesn't work. If that's, if the one part we're looking at that says ridership says 3,000, and that includes weekends, and then the weekday says 43 per day, I, you know, I could get from 46 to 43 using a weekend, but I can't get from 80, 92 to 43 using weekend. So, I mean, it seems to me like the ridership number really is the number of trips by, during the quarter, not the number of individuals per quarter.
Maybe we can get an email clarification.
That's correct, yeah, I'll, I'll try to spell it out.
Yep, something, because we just want the numbers to put.
Sure.
Sure.
So, I know we've got a few other topics going on, so what comes up next?
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I see Minnie has pulled up her video. Minnie, I'll just help control the slides for you from here.
Andrea, good evening, council members and members of the community in attendance tonight. So Light Rail Study, a little bit background in terms of Sound Transit's estimated schedule. So this graphic was part of the Light Rail Planning Guide that council was previously briefed on, and we undertook this, you know, work on the Light Rail Planning Guide in earlier this year and past year. So Sound Transit at this time is saying the planning alternatives development will start in 2027. So at that, that's the official kickoff of the Sound Transit planning process, you know, before their design and construction, which ranges from about total, if you take the alternatives development as well as the environmental review and preliminary design, is about five, five-ish years, four to five years. But that will, that is planned to start in 2027. So what the Issaquah's Light Rail Study process is prior to Sound Transit officially starting off their alternative development process. And, and the purpose of this is really to provide feedback that's unique to Issaquah with, based off of robust public outreach and community's vision for where the station should, you know, some of, some of the policy objectives, as well as some of the, the higher level thinking process for what, what makes sense for Issaquah in terms of the alternatives that should be evaluated. So that, that would feed into the partnership with Sound Transit and Metro and doing some of the legwork ahead of time for it to be a meaningful partnership when the time is right. Next slide, Andrea. Thank you. So this really just shows Sound Transit starts the alternatives development in 2027 with their, all the different alternatives that they come up with. They would do an environmental review for all of them before a preferred alternative is selected. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the recommendations from the Light Rail Study of the station alignment and planning that starts at the local level to inform the process at the Sound Transit level in 2025 and 2026. At the local level, there are other things that would feed into in terms of, you know, what, is it the existing conditions? Is it the future vision for the area? And, and which one, you know, outweighs which, which one? That then feeds into what sort of land use discussions and legislative updates are needed. For instance, you know, does it make sense to have the different types of mixed uses, the type, you know, maximum on parking numbers, creating a transit-oriented development overlay and such after the first couple of years? Next slide, Andrea. So the Light Rail Study is $200,000 per year. I think this is talking about the total number for the biennium budget. And, oh, the scope of the study is really the existing conditions and future analysis that then feed into public outreach, that then establishes the Issaquah's preferred, you know, options for station area planning and analysis and decimal alignment analysis. The impact of delaying this is potential, you know, we tried to put some potential things for you all to consider, missed opportunity to coordinate with I-90 crossing project, potentially limited input in Sound Transit alternatives development, and some sort of, you know, an ability to miss out on public outreach before Sound Transit officially kicks off their process. At this time, we have not applied for any granted or grant funds or are aware of anything that's in the hopper. Next slide. So that's Light Rail Study. The other component that was also part of 2023, 2024 budget was Housing and Parking Study. So a little background on this, how it came about was when Title 18 was wrapping up, there was a future updates list, and council prioritized three items from the future updates list and provided funding as part of the last biennium budget. And what we got out of, we have not started any work on either one of those studies. In the meantime, I'll walk briefly in terms of the dollars. It's $130,000 for housing stud, for the parking study and $200,000 for the housing study. The scope of the housing study really at the time of Title 18 update was perhaps to look at more diversity of housing types and, and what can be done to increase that diversity. Since that time, we got a grant for $100,000, and we engaged with Eco Northwest to do some economic analysis and evaluation of three of the city's adopted housing action plan items. One of them was, should we expand inclusionary zoning outside of central Issaquah? Another one was, how can we remove barriers for condominium development and such? And through that work, you know, some of the, the action items that we've shared previously with council staff then picked up the three top things from that work that potentially we could work on. One of them was, you know, through that process, we learned that perhaps there's could be some more incentives that Issaquah could consider for expanding the inclusionary zoning program and maybe looking at the development density bonus and recalibrating it so it's actually useful and the incentive, in terms of the incentives that actually work. For the parking study, the, you know, the, the scope at this time is to consider citywide requirements and, and with a focus on central Issaquah, and also do some sort of an economic analysis of how, you know, parking regulations can and cannot enhance the development activity. So we don't have any potential housing grants or parking grants at this time. Some of the impacts of delaying this, you know, we don't think there's significant impact because we already have some of these existing programs and regulations in place. The city's doing a lot of work with missing middle updates. That's going to continue the first, at least six months of 2025. That'll help the city, you know, meet the diversity of housing goal from our housing action plan. Also to note was the multifamily tax exemption was expanded in 2024 for the Pioneer Program, which is a pilot program, and also for shelter development agreement. And perhaps it may be good to give some time to see the results of these council actions. And lastly, there's also this bill 6015 that has now eliminated the requirement for structured parking. So the city's going to spend some time, you know, understanding the requirements of that bill and making some code amendments to comply with those state requirements. What we learned through the work with Eco Northwest was the parking standards were perhaps impacting some sort of development feasibility. And so we wanted to, that, that was part of what we also want to study with the parking study, but with this bill, you know, and that requirement for 50% of the parking has to be structured parking, we cannot have that requirement in our codes. So that potentially could significantly improve development feasibility before we, you know, consider additional city incentives, perhaps. Next slide, Andrea.
I think we've got a question here, Director Dollywall.
Sure.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Council President. On SB 6015, could you explain a little bit more when that goes into effect and also explain a little bit more about the extent of that law and would it completely eliminate structured parking? Yeah, that, that law hasn't yet been examined by the council, so that would be great to get more information.
Yeah, we can, we can provide a little more by email. You know, we have just started digging into it ourselves. We did participate and provide some comments during the legislative session on it. What I do know is some of the, so there's not a requirement for the city to have any structured parking, which for cities like Issaquah, it's, it can be challenging because the last thing we want in central Issaquah is more surface parking. But perhaps development itself is going to, you know, self-correct and market will not produce a lot of surface parking because the land values won't support structured parking, but, but the cities can't regulate that you have to build a structure to meet your parking requirements. So we need to understand what that, how that could impact. So we need to understand what that, how that could impact Central Issaquah planning process for us or future development. Some of the other nuances in that were really if you have a gravel parking lot, the cities cannot require additional, you know, those, those are grandfathered, so to speak, and cities can't require those to be paved, things of that nature. So, but in terms of the timing, we are considering bringing this forth for Planning Policy Commission as part of the next year's work plan. So therefore, the parking, you know, we, I think it's in the next slide in terms of what we'll be working on related to parking, and I can speak at that time. But yeah, so for parking, you know, we, we have to look at the missing middle legislations and ADU legislation, so there're going to be some code amendments related to that. We are also in the middle of figuring out electric vehicle requirements, and the state requirements are now ahead of city's requirements. So, but we also learning that we have, this, this is a requirement that kicks in with substantial redevelopment, which can happen often if you have an older building and you're just doing an improvement, which can then trigger a lot of requirements for transformer upgrades and such, which then are becoming somewhat of a concern for businesses. So we want to be, have thoughtful conversations on that and see where the state law is, where Issaquah was, what the community wants, and make a meaningful recommendation to council and then also work on the structured parking requirement. So instead of studying additional parking regulations, we'll be focusing on these three bullet points. And then for the housing, you know, like I spoke, missing middle, work continues, will be evaluating the Pioneer Program. We also have to get a regional growth center certification from PSRC, Regional Council. What we have, you know, staff would also is committed to working on inclusionary zoning, affordable housing. We have real dedicated staff who will continue to work with Arch to see where, if there are small tweaks and things or, or bigger policy questions, we can discuss with Planning Policy Commission and bring forth to council on how we've structured our development density bonus, if there are any additional changes that are needed. But we are not planning to undertake a full multifamily tax exemption analysis. Some of these things are interconnected, so expanding inclusionary zoning and development density bonus, it's the bundle of incentives generally that works, but we can start the, the work with looking at one of them initially and, and with Art's support and not any other consultant support. I think that concludes our presentation.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go through a few questions here. Councilmember Mertz?
Tell me again, SB 6015 would, in a sentence, do what?
It, it requires us to eliminate any garage parking, structured parking. We, we cannot require anyone building a new building, remodels or anything like that to have any sort of structured parking.
And we believe that would be inclusive of any structured parking that Sound Transit would build? That that law would cover parking for Sound Transit?
We can look into it.
I mean, it's here, it's here in this conversation, is it not?
Yeah.
So, okay, so let me go to my other question. Who decides?
I mean, you're going to need a lot of land for 500 parking stalls. So some of it, you know, the market will, will configure. So for Sound Transit, yes, it's expensive to build structured parking, but surface parking, the land prices are probably going to be so cost prohibitive to build a 500 parking, surface parking too. But yeah.
Okay.
Good question.
My next question is, why do you use 500 as a number?
Well, I think that's part of the representative SD3 project for Issaquah that was on the ballot.
So, okay, so it's, so we have, so Sound Transit has cooked in only a 500 stall parking structure at the end of the line?
That is how, well, we don't know, they haven't fully started their process, but what they presented to the voters was based on the, the station and one parking garage of 500 parking spaces.
I asked because I was looking at the MARTA layout in Atlanta, a comparably sized metro, and the ends of the line on the MARTA systems are 2,500 parking stalls, not, not 500. So then my other question is, who decides and when?
For which one?
Well, in the timeline that you showed, who makes the ultimate decision on what our, our station looks like? And when?
Yeah, so the local jurisdictions have the permitting authority. So Issaquah will have the permitting authority. The Sound Transit Board has the final funding, station alignment and selection process authority. But obviously, you know, we want to work in partnership to, to get to a, a place where before it goes to the Sound Transit Board, it, it meets the local needs and objectives, and those are factored in as Sound Transit kicks off their station planning and alignment process.
I'm sorry, I'm still not entirely clear. If, if, let's say there's an option that's 500 units of surface parking, and there's another option that's 500 units of structured parking, who gets to decide which one gets built?
So if the city is legally able to have regulations that require one way or the other, then Sound Transit obviously will be required to meet the city's local permitting authority or, or rules and regulations. So it all depends on what the city's rules and regulations are and, and, but the programmatically, how much, the size and scale, you know, unless the city has a requirement for X number of spaces and things like that. So all of that needs to be fully studied and evaluated. I think it's a little premature for us to be speculating the number. At this point, it's more about what's the goal for, you know, for the station? Is it a community that, you know, greatly connects our folks that live? Or is it where closer to employment, more employee-related? So I think as part of the Light Rail Planning Guide, there were few options evaluated, you know, close to existing transit centers, close to high-density residential, close to unemployment centers and things of that nature, that then inform what the needs for Issaquah are, and then of course, for Sound Transit regionally, what makes sense because the, the alignment will serve not just the Issaquah residents but beyond.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still confused. Let's say both options are permissible in our code, a 500-unit surface parking and a 500-unit structured parking. Who decides and when in the timeline that you were showing? Because I don't see final decision in that timeline. Maybe I missed it.
Sure, so yeah, thank you, thank you, Andrea. I also have Thomas Valdes, who led the Light Rail Study Guide in, in attendance virtually. And we also have Kristin Leeson. Sorry, I apologize for not introducing you earlier. We have two members of the community planning and development here as well, and I will turn over to Thomas after I speak to this graphic briefly. So I think here, what you see, the second is the planning alternatives development. So that's the route and station alternatives that developed and preferred alternative is identified. So Sound Transit does that, but our hope is that it's a partnership and we, we inform because we have the most local knowledge of, of our city. So we know the existing conditions, what the future will withhold, and I think Sound Transit would, would work in partnership with us. It doesn't get actually selected until later when they also have to do environmental review. So the environmental impacts of the alternatives are studied. So you cannot pick one alternative that has the most impact because you are obligated to look at impacts and choose the one that is the preferred. So there's a preferred alternative from an environmental impact statement, analysis, environmental review analysis that comes up. Then Sound Transit goes to final design and obtains the private properties, the easements and such, then it builds, but there's a Sound Transit Board action that happens before all of that starts.
So Councilmember Mertz, if I may, this is Deputy City Administrator Snyder. Just to answer your question very succinctly, Sound Transit gets the final say in the scenario that you posed. So if, if it seems like surface or structured parking are allowed in our code, Sound Transit would have the final say because they pay the bill and they have final say on the design. So that decision would occur in, we estimate, 2033 to 2034.
Thank you for this succinct answer.
And Andrea, I just want to clarify, I know the slides went from Light Rail Study to the Housing and Parking Study. Those are different concepts, and it's my understanding the SB 6015 is about residential structured parking, not anything that would relate to Sound Transit.
It's really about the city's ability to codify our own requirements for structured parking. The idea that structured parking is very expensive and sometimes is a barrier to certain types of development. And so what this does is it preempts local control of things like how we dictate parking in our city. So it's beyond Sound Transit, you're right, it's for all types of development. So that'd be residential, commercial, et cetera.
I'd like to get a clarification on that at some point via email, because reading the final bill report, it specifically says residential, so I want to...
Great, sure. And we, we can, thank you for that, and we can absolutely do that. As Minnie said, this is something that we're trying to dig into a little bit more and really find out what it means, especially for our specific codes and how we may need to change our code in the future. So thank you.
Okay. So before we move on to the next subject, which is the fleet fund and replacements, any other questions on light rail or housing and parking study?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Dollywall, especially for joining us overseas to make that presentation. I'd like to welcome up Administrative Services Director Autumn Monahan to talk about the fleet fund.
Good evening, council members. I'm Autumn Monahan, Administrative Services Director, and my department includes fleet. So I'm here tonight to provide an overview of the proposed replacements and new acquisitions in fleet that are in the proposed budget. About 75% of the proposed acquisitions are replacements. About a million of that is carryovers from this year. We've had some challenges due to supply issues on attaining all the vehicles that we had funded previously. In addition, our 2023 study, so a study we completed last year, found that about half of our motorized fleet units are older than the recommended life cycle, lifecycle for their class. So we are way behind on our replacements. Our replacement goal is to minimize the total cost of ownership. And when it comes to maintenance, there are some other impacts of retaining an aging fleet. That includes staff productivity due to unreliable vehicles, parts availability, if you have older vehicles, finding parts can be a challenge. Older vehicles emit more pollution, and then there's also increased safety, of course, when you're purchasing newer models of vehicles.
Before we move on, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. A quick clarification on older than the recommended lifecycle for their class. Does that mean that 49% of the city's cars are older than, are, are beyond the lifetime of, like, they should have been replaced? And so they're older than the optimal time that it should be replaced?
Exactly, yes. So in our fleet study, we worked with consultants that have worked with fleets all over the country, I believe, and they have provided some standards for replacement of vehicles depending on their class. And as they assessed our fleet back last year, about half were past the recommended lifecycle for age when it comes to vehicles. So we've been delaying, you know, purchasing and replacing vehicles for a while, and that's starting to catch up, which you'll see a bit more to in another graph. But hence why there is so much in the proposed budget around replacement for vehicles.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So a quick recap of these replacements, significant amount is funded by utilities, so water, sewer and storm, about 3 million in vehicles and equipment. Next up is then police, followed by parks, both in recreation and operations, as well as Public Works has some shared vehicles in streets. And then both community planning and development and executive have one vehicle each that are up for replacement. The other 25% of the acquisitions are proposed as new vehicles and equipment, and these are all fully funded by utilities. These acquisitions include hydro, I always cannot pronounce this word, excavation truck, cargo van, utility trucks for new FTEs that are in the proposed budget, a larger pervious surface cleaning machine, a remote-controlled steep slope mower, and a small dump truck. Just a quick overview of the fleet fund, this is our main customers. So our main customer is Public Works, followed closely by Police and then Parks. And if you look at it by allocation by fund, the general fund is the main funder for the fleet fund, followed by utilities and then streets. So as I mentioned, we completed the fleet study last year that recommends we create a more leveled plan for replacing vehicles to avoid any really large expenses in certain years, which you can see here in the darker columns on this graph. The study provided us typical replacement schedules of vehicles by their class as a starting point. And using that, we have created a very detailed tool that factors in age, annual usage, the type of vehicle, to help us plan out a more leveled approach moving forward when it comes to replacements. But for now, as you can see, we have a very large backlog, if you look at 2023, that we're attempting to start to address now within the proposed budgets that will get us on the right track. Also wanted to mention too, which I did before as we presented the proposed budget, we're also recommending another mechanic FTE as part of the proposed budget. In the past 20 years, we've added 78 vehicles to our fleet and 220 pieces of equipment without adding additional staff to our shop. This causes some productivity challenges and delays in repair and maintenance. So we're definitely playing catch-up, and this budget starts to address some of those challenges we've seen in fleet. We look forward in the next couple of years to doing more work within the fleet fund, to do more best, better cost allocation back to departments and funds, as well as refining this replacement tool. Once we get back on track, to start implementing a leveled plan for replacements. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Autumn, thanks for that presentation. The prior presentation that talked about EV requirements for residential housing triggered this question in my mind as you were talking about the fleet. You outlined the other considerations for costs in the fleet fund replacement, slide 15 that you had. And I was wondering if there are, if there's been an accounting or it's an issue at all to have both a EV fleet and a gas-powered fleet at the same time? And whether having those two at the same time increases the cost or reduces the cost for our overall fleet? And that's probably a question that's beyond your presentation today, but I was just curious whether or not moving to one or the other would save us money or it makes sense for us to keep both. So if that could be a question that perhaps be answered by email in the future, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. Hey, Autumn, you mentioned that some of the funds that we're spending in 2025 or planning to spend in 2025 were unspent from 2024. So how are we, how does that get accounted for? I mean, does it end up in ending fund balance and then carried forward? Is it new money? What's, let's listen to the CFO.
Councilmember Ray, thank you for the question. Yes, so at the end of 2024 is when there's a final budget amendment typically in a typical year, and we also do reauthorizations. So those reauthorizations from 2024 funds or from one biennium budget to another occur with reauthorizations. So it would be returning to council for council's approval at the end of the year or beginning of next year.
So is it reflected now in ending fund balance because we didn't spend it?
Yes, it would be reflected in ending fund balance at the end of 2024 if we don't spend it. And I think one of the reasons why we haven't spent it all is because of a supply issue and being able to get them when we wanted to get them in the first place.
And then I just have to ask this question because $70,000 or $60,000 for a single vehicle seems like a lot for, not that we don't like the executive department, but what's all included in that, that cost estimate? Because that seems like a lot for a car. Or is it something like an arbed car?
You know, I can, I can get back to you on the exact model that we used for the cost estimate on the vehicle. cost estimate on the vehicle. For those, there's not a whole lot of upfitting, I would assume. It's mostly just vehicle acquisition. This is Kelly Cusman, our fleet manager.
Good evening, City Council. Some of the estimates are sound elevated, but we're trying to match the great candidates for transition to electric vehicle. And some of these staff cars are those. And you're looking at a, you know, a factor that wildly ranges from, you know, $30,000 to 5X when you start talking about different models of the fleet. So when we're looking at staff cars, we're looking at transitioning to electric. And some of them, like CPD, there is some upfitting because that is now a mobile office. We've got computer docking stations and stuff like that and storage items in there. That answer your question.
That is perfect. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I get into mine? Okay. So talking to other city councils, they have a fleet, like a list of vehicles that they're going to replace each year, what the models are, what their goals are for replacing them, which come first, all of that. Where are we in that process? And then if we don't have that, how are you choosing the ones in this next budget? And how can we evaluate whether those are the right decisions for what our needs are?
Sure. So yes, we have developed a tool and we'll be retooling that as we have worked on more of a level plan, hopefully, and doing some catch up in this proposed budget. So we do have that tool. It goes out many, many years. It's wonderful to start to see these leveled kind of steps as we go through replacement of certain vehicles. It's quite exciting to map out and see. We, you know, we talked about this too. This, if you want to, if council's interested in getting into the details of certain vehicles have priority over others when it comes to priority, you know, we don't include vehicles in our capital improvement planning. And so that could be an opportunity in the future if council wants to get more into the details around vehicles and again, priority or, or importance. But besides that, we're looking at age, we're looking at typical use of the vehicle. I mean, patrol vehicles, for example, with police have a lot of usage. Age is another factor too. And then a lot of it too is just the eyes and ears of the folks in our fleet shop who know our, our vehicles and what may need replacement sooner rather than later.
Okay. I'm still going to end up struggling with this idea because you're talking about, you know, 3 million and things like that. Part of it is about the accounting practices of moving money, you know, and covering with the remaining fleet fund balance for certain areas, but not for others. Is there anything else you can give on how we evaluate whether that's the right amount of money?
I can provide the detailed list of all the vehicles that are part of the proposed budget for, for this biennium if you're interested, just to kind of see a bit of the age of some of the vehicles, what we're talking about as far as types of vehicles and some of those decision points. Most of them, as you can see from this graph, are about age. A lot of these vehicles are way past their, just their useful life.
Okay. Just hard as you're comparing between the needs of Metro Flex and the planning studies and then being given this with 3.2 million of trying to figure out where that goes. But, okay. Two more. Councilmember Ray, Councilmember Hall.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump you. How many vehicles do we have, all told, all rolled up? I mean, this represents over this 20-year period. How many are we replacing? I mean, I think there's probably some new, some adds as well as replacements.
How many are in our, our full fleet or how many are we proposing to replace?
Yes, both.
Oh, okay.
Currently, it's 178, 178 licensed vehicles. But that is just vehicles. We also have off-road and construction equipment and trailers, specialized equipment that goes into that. And that number then inflates up to about 650 by the time we're, everything we look at in fleet. The-
But this number here that we're looking at for replacements, that's the 179, not all the, the fun off-road construction cool stuff.
And I, I can't count all this in the moment, so I can send you an email with that because there's, this combines both equipment and vehicles.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good question. Councilmember Hall.
Just a super quick question. Do we, in fleet, do we buy outright or do we finance vehicles as well? Or is it some sort of mix?
We buy outright.
We typically buy outright, but that depends. Sometimes there's really expensive things that we buy, like a dump truck might be $1.5 million. So we might spread those costs out over time. It really depends on the vehicle.
And have we done our, I'm just thinking of like EFOR when we were thinking about our own asset management and came up with some interesting financing options. Have we done our own kind of self-analysis of what we feel is appropriate to finance to save money now versus long-term?
And we, we do that depending on the, the equipment that we have to purchase. So we look at that, especially when you're talking about apparatus, fire apparatus, those are big dollars as well. And so it depends on what we're buying and we look at the interest rates of the time and the other terms, right? So there's a lot of factors that we would need to take into account that are timely. And so creating a long-term plan, sometimes those factors change over time.
Okay, thanks.
Great questions. Okay, so looks like we're done with fleet fund. So end of the budget timeline.
Great. Thank you very much. So looking at our timeline, we're here at this moment, November 12th. That's outlined in red, budget deliberations. We have next week as well. So we want to provide any information that council requests. We have written down a few of your questions this evening that we will be responding to. November 25th is when we anticipate property tax adoption. December 2nd is the final budget hearing. We also have additional opportunities to discuss budget on December 3rd with potential final budget adoption on December 9th. That said, if council feels like we don't need all of those extra dates, we could adopt the budget as soon as December 2nd, following the final budget hearing, if council so chooses. So again, some of the direction needed related to tonight's agenda is, does the council agree with the administration's recommendations set forth in the proposed budget to cancel the city's contribution to Metro Flex, to postpone the light rail study beyond the next biennium unless other funding becomes available, postpone the housing and parking studies, again, unless other funding becomes available if we discover different grants, et cetera. And then to keep the fleet fund budget as proposed. We seek your direction this evening. Thank you.
Okay. So I know we've asked a lot of questions, but I'm sure there's going to be more. So we'll start with questions and then see if there's any comments. Go ahead, Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. And I'm, I wish I'd, I had written down, I know I missed it earlier, but this is a Metro Flex question. And we talked about the potential for a grant to cover the Metro Flex cost. What are the termination provisions in our agreement with Metro? So what do we have to give them to get out?
We have to provide Metro notice at least 180 days, I believe, before the service change. So they typically would change service on a, on a couple of chosen dates per year. And so that would mean that actually going into 2025, we would still have Metro Flex service for quite a few months before the date in which we could cancel it by contract.
All right, let me, I'm just doing a little timeline here. So if we don't fund it, we're still gonna, we would, we would send to a termination, notice of termination end of the year. It would take effect in, end of June-ish. Or, you know, within a few days. The grant that we're hoping for, we're expecting beginning of third quarter if we get it. So, I mean, we're just kind of like between a rock and a hard place in a timing continuum, aren't we?
There's a few unknowns that are rather inconvenient, yes.
That's like a rock and a hard place?
Yes, yes.
All right, thanks.
I'm gonna just cap on that. Is the amount needed to cover that portion already in the budget?
Uh, in preparation for this evening, we discovered there was a slight error where that was not included. But we will include it for the adopted budget because we have contractual obligations to provide this service.
And can we get the amount that that is and whether that then adjusts the, given an email that said $525,222 for the biennium, does that, is that inclusive of that period of time?
That is, so that was the total needed to fund Metro Flex for the next biennium is 522,000 and change. On a per annual basis, that's 262,000. So we would need to budget a portion of that 262,000 to cover our contractual obligations for 2025.
So technically, if we chose to extend the service, while the cost is 525,000, the additional cost is really, I mean, basically if we're saying we have to pay for it for the first six months anyway, we're on the hook for that. So what we're talking about when we're negotiating, how much money we would need to cover would be closer to the 375, 400, whatever it is.
For the remainder to cover it for the biennium?
Yeah.
Yes. And if you'd like a more specific breakdown of costs, we can certainly provide one. I see a lot of nods, so we can do that.
Great. Okay. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. And I agree, I should have asked these questions earlier when people were speaking. I have one on Metro Flex and one on light rail. I know it's expensive, but given kind of where we've been asking questions and council's thoughts on Metro Flex, I'm just curious if staff have considered what cost-saving options might be available to fund Metro Flex through the biennium? Is that something beyond the grant that staff have put any brain power to thinking, you know, what might be kind of options here? Or is that not happening?
Cost-saving options like reducing the contract and the scope of the contract?
Reducing other areas of the budget to, to find room for Metro Flex.
I see. I think we're looking for council's direction this evening. If that's what council would like the administration to do, then we will take note and we can come back with our recommendations.
Okay. So that would follow whatever policy direction council would give, one way or the other?
That's correct.
For the light rail study, I guess this is really more of a comment, but I'm wondering if we've had a chance to touch base with Shelley about this. I mean, this seems like it could be a competitive budget proviso at the state level to reach out to our state legislators within the operating budget. And I'm just wondering if we've had any conversations or if the staff would be open bringing this up at the legislative breakfast next week?
We can certainly raise the question with Shelley. Oh, I, I guess, but we can certainly raise that question with Shelley and get back to you.
Maybe just something to do on. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Okay. So it looks like we're good on questions. So I will just take a moment and see if we have any members of the public online that might be interested in making comments.
Yes, Council President, we do.
Okay. So if anybody's online wants to raise their hand or press star three if they're on the phone, we would love to hear.
Council President Connie Marsh would like to speak to the council. Connie, I have made you a panelist. You can now unmute and turn on your camera.
Connie?
Hey, I'm here. At Boxers. Hi all. So I'm going to start with, I guess, irony. I've spent so many years with the city and its mobility master plan, trying to figure out how to get people out of their cars and into transit and, and yet we're looking at a budget that reduces transit and invest hugely in vehicles. And I gotta say, it sort of makes my brain hurt on a larger level, higher up than you've been discussing. And it's so incredibly awkward. Then I want to talk a little bit about asset management because you have buildings that are in decay that now you want to tear down. And now we have a fleet that hasn't been taken care of in a long time. And I'm wondering how we got here and how we make sure that this will never happen again. And I sort of feel like funding everything and just accepting it as it is, is, is not holding the city's feet to the fire to create a construct for the entire city on how we caretake the public's facilities so that then the public does not end up losing things that it values, like parks and bus service and nonprofit funding, because the city has not kept up in a, in sort of a linear way with its responsibilities. Because I feel like the public is losing here through no fault of our own because we just keep paying. Now, the next one I'm going to talk about is, I'm confused that the city council does not seem to be asking more about the nonprofits. In the past, the nonprofits had a day where they would come in and talk about the things that they were going to do in a year because they're sort of the community volunteer group. And they compound the work that can be done in a city. Yet they have been segregated out from the city council and they're mainly funded by staff. And so this interface of our, our nonprofits and the things that we volunteer for are no longer connected to our elected officials, except for in the most distant of ways. And that disturbs me because I don't see it working very well in some areas. So I would request that the city council ask to have one of those nights where it gets to be introduced to the nonprofits and what they do and what their funding means to them during the budget cycle. The most disturbing one, of course, is downtown Issaquah Association whose stripping of funding did not even show up in the budget. It just sort of appeared to the side. And that is not transparent to the community. And, and it, so it seems disingenuous where it says 12% reduction mainly in 2026, yet one of the nonprofits is having their funding drastically reduced with no public visibility in the budget. So, uh, oh, one last one. I've gone to several meetings where the theme of the budget was, well, we aren't making enough money. But really, the theme of this budget is we're making the same amount of money. It's just we have these expenses that are spiraling up. And so I would like to see the same theme in all of the meetings that discuss the budget in this city be, because the people are confused. Do we need to make more money or do we need to maintain costs? And they're a little bit different conversations. Perhaps, though this never comes through in any of our how do we fund things conversations, perhaps the community can make itself more money if we support more businesses and we figure out how to market our city more robustly. And we can make more money without just having to tax people. Wouldn't that be brilliant? But nobody ever talks about it. Okay, now I'm done. Thank you very much for going through an excruciating budget.
Thanks, Connie. And do we have anybody else online indicating a desire to speak?
Council President, nobody else has expressed a desire to speak.
Okay. And I'll note there's no members of the public in the audience remaining. So at this point, I'm looking to council. We've got a few questions up there, four questions related to, does the council agree with the administration's recommendations that we want to hear about? And I'll also just put a little bit of- And I'll also just put a little bit of pressure note on here, this is a shortened budget cycle. So the administration really needs to hear from us if there are going to be any opportunities for changes or just understanding how we can get the budget through the end at this point. So I will open it up for comments. Councilmember Ray.
I'd like to go first. So just, I'll take the four questions, I'll take them in order. The first one, this is a hard one around Metro Flex because there's a lot of support for it, but it's also very expensive and it's extremely expensive if I factor in not only the city's contribution, but the metro's contribution to it. So I don't have a strong recommendation here. We are on the hook or are obligated to for half the year essentially of Metro Flex. So my, my initial thinking on Metro Flex is we fund the first year and then we check in on our grant and that way gives us some time and some buffer there. I do that with great reservations because a year of Metro Flex is an FTE, so there's somebody we're laying off that we could fund if we weren't funding Metro Flex. And I'm looking at everything I'm looking at in terms of FTE that we're having to let go. So that's my, that's my touchstone. The light rail study in 2025, 2026, I didn't see a number and I don't, didn't look at the budget, so I'm not 100% sure what that cost is. But if we're going to be ahead of the power curve in 2027, when the alternatives are being looked at by Sound Transit, we need to have done our homework and have everything lined up so that we are ready when they are ready. So I think if there's a way to fund that, we should. I think we should postpone the housing and parking study. It's interesting, but that's one where I think we have some flexibility. And then finally, on the fleet fund, it's a lot of money. I think we can sharpen our pencils. There is always an opportunity to smartly defer capital investment, that's what this is. But it's balancing off the cost of maintenance and the cost of parts and the cost of downtime and all of those things. But I think that the proposed budget for fleet seems awfully high to me on a forever basis, and that's what it looks like. So there, I think that there is some, we can absorb some risk there, and I think this is what Councilmember Hall spoke to a little bit, and look for some alternatives for how we, how we fund the fleet replacement. Those are my thoughts.
Great, okay. I know it is Deputy Council President De Michelle, and then I'm just going to go down the line.
Great, thank you. So over the last couple of weeks, since our last discussion, the item that I have heard the most from the public about is Metro Flex. Yesterday at the Veterans Day celebration, I heard from senior citizens who said they really, really are learning to rely on this. I've certainly heard from the garage and how important it is to their being able to get kids there and kids are using it and the school district is also seeing that. And then just random people, people, somebody, I think Emily said, we really did a lot of saturation of the community and people have kind of embraced Metro Flex as this is our Metro Flex. And so I've just run into people randomly who say, why are we cutting Metro Flex? And so they're concerned about it. So to me, that says that we've got a community that is really invested in this project and would like to see it continue. And I think this bodes well in terms of a long-term investment in what Connie Marsh talked about, getting people out of their cars and into a transit system. So the big question is, it's, it's expensive and how are we going to fund it? I tend to agree with Councilmember Ray that can we at least commit to one more year and see how that grant comes out and how would we pay for it? Well, can we look at my beloved pavement management program and see? Yeah, ooh, okay, sorry. Can we look at the beloved pavement management program and see if there's a couple hundred thousand that we might be able to cut there? Or again, can we, as, as Councilmember Ray said, can we sharpen our pencils around the fleet fund and see if we can just find some extra money to at least do for another year and then see if there's going to be grants available? And also, what I mentioned earlier, talk to Metro about can we get into their budget cycle or funding in a, in a later budget cycle for Metro? So I also thought that, that Director Dolly Wall made a, a good case for continuing the light rail study and getting ready for, for that. And so I would support that if we could, if we could find the money or if we can find grants for that. I think we can postpone the housing and parking studies. And as I've said, I agree with, let's sharpen our pencils a little bit more around the fleet fund and see if we can reduce that. That's a dramatic increase in funding when we're facing some very tough issues. So I also wanted to, if I could just take a point of privilege here and correct something I said at the last deliberations that we had. I misread the budget and I had this corrected by Deputy Administrator Snyder. There is not, not going to be any changes to the grant funding, human services grant funding. And so I just wanted to clarify that, especially hearing Connie Marsh's comments. I, I misread that and I misspoke at the last meeting, and I just want to be sure that anybody in the public that was listening to that should be assured that there are not going to be cuts to the grants that have already been awarded for the human services. And so I hope that we can get that information out to people. Thank you.
And to add to that, just to clarify, there are proposed 12% cuts to certain nonprofits who are not in the human services space. Can you detail what those are or who the?
There are proposed cuts for 2026. So for the second half of the biennium by 12%, which is what we've asked most of the city departments to reduce their budgets by in order to balance this budget. So we're asking our, some of our, some of our nonprofit partners to do the same. Nonprofit partners such as the Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, the Issaquah Alps Trails Club, Friends of Lake Smamish State Park, those organizations, and Issaquah History Museums as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Council President. So I'm not ready to cut Metro Flex yet. If we were going to cut it now or six months from now, I'd want a better understanding of the total cost model, both for us and for King County. I'd want to hear from Metro about whether there's other solutions to help try to keep this in place. I, I would also want to get my arms around this idea that it's extremely expensive compared to what? Like, is it really, how, how does it compare to regular bus service? Is it twice as expensive? Okay, well, that would be extremely expensive on a per ride, but if it's 10 times, then, then that is a lot. But let's not do that. I, I really like Councilmember Ray's suggestion of just extending it a year, giving ourselves some time to find other funding sources that represents a small incremental cost over going for six months and then shutting it down. So I think that's the right solution rather than the administration trying to contort itself around trying to give me all the answers to a million financial questions. On the second thing, postponing the light rail study, I continue to be incredibly worried about the fact that everything nowadays costs a lot of money and Sound Transit is going to be out of money or they're going to have about three cents in their pocket when they get out to Issaquah and go to do our project, and they're going to have to do it as cheaply as possible. And that's going to mean surface parking and, which we don't want to see. And we all have a vision of what that end of the line parking structure looks like, and it won't be what we want to see. I'm looking at the parking structure, my brother lives in Sandy Springs, Georgia, which is the north end of the, the end of the north line, red line, I think, or MARTA, and they have, I'm looking at the two 20, you know, the two 1,250 stall parking structures. That would be, we would be lucky if we got the giant parking structures because what we would get is 2,500 stalls of surface parking, which would be not anything in the same time zone for what our residents want. So I, I don't know how to solve this problem. It's inherent to the fact that everything costs a ton of money and Sound Transit, I mean, they'll be lucky to have money to build service parking by the time they get to Issaquah, much less building the kind of transit hub that we all think our city needs. So the, the whole thing is filled with, is rife with peril. And I don't know what to do, but if, being a Luddite and throwing my clog into the machine by pushing back the light rail study does that, I, I just, until, until I see something that makes me think that Sound Transit will have more than $3 when they get to Issaquah, I'm going to be, I'm going to be dubious about a process that allows them to decide it because, not that they would do it through any kind of a levelance, they would do it because that's all that they can afford. So sure, throw my clog into the, into the machine as the Luddites did. On number three, this whole thing, we need to, we need to hear about this SB 6015 and what it does and doesn't do. I'm tired of Olympia taking away legal authority from municipalities for whatever good cause they think they have the right to do, especially when they won't fund the things that they claim to care about. And then the fleet fund budget, I don't know, I'm not an expert on vehicles. We have people who are experts on vehicles. I don't have a big emotional attachment to it. I will say on the subject of nonprofits, in the good old days, we would have a day at Services and Safety and Parks, back before it was called Services, Safety and Parks, and it would be, it would be, basically be a show and tell. And all the nonprofits would come in and they would produce materials commensurate to the size of organization that they were to show us how they were spending our money. And the public would show up and it was a wonderful opportunity to highlight how these organizations were using our money. And somehow, we have lost that in the process. And so were I to be lucky enough to be Chair of Services, Safety and Parks in two years, I would love it if we had something like that where, you know, we saw the light of day, these organizations came in and, and did a robust enthusiastic explanation to us on how they spend our money, I think it'd be good for them and I think it'd be good for us. Thank you for letting me monologue.
Okay, let me just make sure I understood what you said about the light rail study. By throwing your clog into that, do you mean into the machine?
It's a reference to the Luddites.
Yes, no, no, I get that. But are you suggesting that postponing the light rail study or doing the light rail study would achieve your goals?
I believe postponing it.
Okay, just wanted to.
Thank you for, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, absolutely.
Until such time as they have a funding mechanism that would arrive with more than $3 in, at the time when they go.
I believe you said three cents and that may be.
Eh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with you.
Only two orders of magnitude difference.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I want to hear, we are having some WebEx issues or?
Yes, we are.
Okay, are we okay to continue or?
We're live streaming on YouTube, so the meeting is, is still happening live on YouTube, but we're working on the WebEx issue right now.
Okay, fantastic. And then Deputy City Administrator, oh, that was, okay. Fantastic, great. Okay, going down, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. So firstly, this is a budget overall that focuses on really important things because it is a difficult budget year, and I think the mayor and the administration are absolutely right to focus on the really important, high-level things that are the, the focus of this budget, which includes equity and sustainability. This budget does reflect a lot of reductions, including layoffs of people that were doing really great work for the city, and we discussed that last, last time we met, but I did want to set that context. Metro Flex, the way I see it, is one of the programs that really does make contributions in a concrete way towards equity and sustainability in the city. I, I don't agree with canceling our contributions. I agree with my fellow councilmembers who have spoken on this about continuing the program. Last meeting, we had a Hope Link representative come and speak to the value of the program for clients of Hope Link. We've had, we've had seniors speak to the importance of this program for them, students that came earlier this evening and spoke about the importance in their lives and also advocating for low-income folks. And, you know, also in, in the map that was shown, Rosecrest, which is imagine housing, low-income housing, I believe 30% to 60% AMI. In my neighborhood, that's where folks are using this service. So it is, I think, a really important service for those in our community that are using it. We did a pilot program to learn about where neighborhoods would use this, and it is true that our, our theories going into the program or hypotheses, some of those did not, did not work out the way we thought, but that's part of why we did a pilot, right? And I think what we're seeing is that a lot of folks in apartment buildings across the city and those multifamily housing, they are using this program. And I would like to make sure that we continue to support this, both from the sustainability, meeting some of our goals of having people not, not have to rely on a car to get around and, and for the equity impacts. I, I agree with extending it a year, however, because I think it's really an important program and because we're committing to doing a two-year budget, I, I would advocate for putting it, funding in for the two years. I agree, it would be wonderful and amazing if we do get a grant and we don't have to worry about funding it out of the city's fund in the second year, but as a, as a city and as a council, we committed to this two, two-year biennial budget and because of all of the policy reasons and because of the value to the community, I would vastly prefer funding it for the two years over the program. And then hopefully we do, hopefully it's a non-issue in the second year and we get a grant, but if not, I want to continue to fund this. On the housing, oh, sorry, on the light rail study, I agree with Councilmember Martz in that I think we can put this on, we can postpone this. I think we also have had great conversations with the community over the last recent year or so to make sure that we have that feedback about what the community wants to see. We have started the process of planning, and I think that we, we do have some time here because of the light rail schedule. So given the current budget situation, I think this makes a lot of sense to postpone it. On the housing and parking studies, we in the Planning, Development and Environment Committee of this council have been talking about the missing middle housing provisions and how we can use, you know, the Eco Northwest recommendations as well as the, as well as the cities, or the states, rather, new laws that have been passed and, you know, how we can use the combination of those two things. And I think that with, between that and between the, what sounds like a very important parking regulation that has recently come down that we have not yet looked at in Planning, Development and Environment, I think we have a lot to work through without the study. And I also agree that we will learn through this pilot and through the MFT that was, that's in the, the pilot. So I think for all those reasons, postponing the housing and parking study does make a lot of sense, and I'm, I'm satisfied that we have lots to work through on the policy side to help make some progress on missing middle housing in the meantime. And then on the fleet fund, as far as when we, where we look at what to fund the Metro Flex program with, I did wonder if we might phase in this approach to funding the fleet fund and so not do as much catching up. I also think that the pavement management, especially since Councilmember De Michelle mentioned it, that was the thing that I was thinking about as well. And the reason I was thinking about that as a, as a potential savings, and I welcome feedback from the administration and from staff, but the reason I was thinking about that too is because we did have a lot of recovery funding over the last years, and we did a lot of pavement management, and I think the community really has, has noticed and appreciated that. But that pavement, you know, that was a lot of work that was done over a short period of time, which was possible because of funding, federal funding that will, will no longer be available, but I do think it potentially could be seen as buying us some time to slow down our city contribution for a little bit while we adjust to that. So those were my thoughts on, on potential savings.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Sure, thank you. I won't.
I won't repeat what's already been said, but walking through the questions here, I agree that I'm not ready to say no on Metro Flex yet, or to cancel Metro Flex. I want to have a kind of a broader conversation about where, what options might exist for finding cost savings to fund Metro Flex through the next biennium. pavement management is one. I asked a question just today about the open space park acquisition program and how often we spend down that $500,000 a year that's there. So just, I guess it would be good to come back to council and have kind of a conversation about, here's what the options would look like, here's how much it would hurt, and then we can have a policy discussion up here on the dais about whether or not we want to move forward with something like that. I guess my mind in this space is funding for Metro Flex isn't just about funding for Metro Flex, it's also, I mean, we've talked about hearing from residents, but also it was one of the top things that we hear in the community survey, is support for public transportation. And then, I think, too, that it shows our commitment to King County Metro itself, when they start to think about what communities in King County support public transit and what communities in King County should we be prioritizing when we draw new routes. So I also think it's just important to continue to underline that Issaquah is a community that supports public transportation. But again, I guess I'm just saying I would like to have the conversation more, not necessarily saying no to the administration's recommendation yet, because I also understand why it's up there. Makes perfect sense to me. For the light rail study, I agree with all the reasons that's been said, that it can be postponed, although I think that there is a good opportunity to have conversations with our state legislators. One of our state legislators is on the Appropriations Committee, so that would be a good person to talk to about, would this be an attractive budget proviso in the operating budget and the transportation budget, so on and so forth. The housing and parking studies.
Okay, welcoming us back in after we've gotten our technical difficulties addressed. Hopefully, things will go smoother. I will go back to Councilmember Hall because I know you were, I know at some point in the middle of the conversation, you know, your comments there.
I had quite literally just finished, so I'm not entirely sure what to do except for to say some of the context staff and the people in the room have now, but maybe I'll just run through for the sake of the public, a quick answers to the direction needed questions that we have here. I had thought that it was too early to say yes to canceling the city's contribution to Metro Flex and wanted to see some options for council to consider. Okay with postponing the light rail study, acknowledging that this is a good topic to bring up with the legislature. Somewhat hesitantly, okay postponing the housing and parking studies, but wanting to have a broader conversation around the scope of work there, the scope of work in the work plan, what's left to do in the Eco Northwest report, in having kind of a policy discussion amongst council about what makes sense for the biennium, recognizing that some of that's required. And then supportive of keeping the fleet budget, fleet fund, oh my God, fleet fund budget as proposed, acknowledging work and asking the question, is there any more risk that could be absorbed in that fund? And asking for a response to that. And then a couple of other additional things I want council to talk about in the future, which was the park and open space acquisition program and the TDRs and LCL feasibility study that was funded in the previous budget. And I'm not quite sure if we did that work or not yet. And that, I think, was it. So thanks.
Excellent. Councilmember Joe?
All right, I'll be as succinct as possible because I know the hour is late. I would like us to continue to look at not canceling Metro Flex. I would like to know what we would need to cut if we do keep Metro Flex for both of the years in the biennial budget coming up. I agree with Councilmember Hunt that if we're going to commit to it, we should commit to it for the two years of the biennial budget. But I do want to see what we would lose or what will not be given to our citizens if we do keep Metro Flex. Postpone the light rail study beyond '25, '26? Yes, that's just fine. However, I would just ask that the administration do the usual diligence that they always do to keep us informed. If we think that the timing is coming near to start that study, you know, give us a six-month kind of lead time so that we can see if we need to scramble mid-year or at the end of year one in the budget to try to find money to make that happen. I think it's vitally important that we time that study so that we don't lose the work we've done on the I-90 overpass, underpass crossing along the way. And we have seen what has happened with Mercer Island, for instance, when they didn't do their planning in advance, they got a product that was terrible. They got a product that was so terrible, they had to sue Sound Transit. We want to be kind of in the opposite position where we have planned, have heard back from our citizens what they want, we have the information at our disposal as we go and advocate for our citizens and for our city with Sound Transit along the way. So, the administration does a great job of looking over the horizon a little bit. I'd ask that they keep that on their radar going into '25 and '26. Postpone housing and parking studies? Yes. The cities that I have visited are struggling with 1337, ADUs, 1110, middle housing, the other elements that are along with it, and they have their hands full with trying to get those pieces in place before the deadline of June of next year, alongside the parallel kind of stone that's rolling down the hill of the comp plan and trying to get that done before the end of the year. So postponing those housing studies, I don't have a problem with that because as pointed out during the presentation, we need some time to see if the MFTE program that we kind of adjusted a little bit is working or not. We also need to see if the Pioneer project that has been kind of adopted, see how that gets adopted, how that gets picked up along the way. So we do have some other pieces that we probably want to see before we dive into a housing and parking study a little bit more deeply, so I do not have a problem with postponing those unless funding becomes available. Finally, on the fleet subject, I'm in favor of keeping the fleet fund budget as proposed. I know that it's difficult, we're talking about big budget items along the way, but I think the only caveat would be, I agree with Council President, that I would just like to see kind of the planning for the years and the items that might be on the horizon so that we can just get a general idea of the overall plan, but I think the budget as proposed needs to go forward. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, I'll throw my comments into the mix. So first, I appreciate what Councilmember Hunt said about, hey, this is a big adjustment to our budgets, and so recognizing the sacrifices that we've already had to make at this point and recognizing the loss of great employees who we just had to let go, given the budget circumstances. A member of the public asked, you know, looking at the large scale, is this an issue of expenses rising or revenues need to be increased? And I would say yes to both. Yes, expenses are increasing because of inflation. Yes, we've got a whole heck of a lot of deferred maintenance and facilities and fleet that we need to address. But also, we have structural budget issues just because of the way that the state has set up our financing, but also our development patterns. Our development patterns, when we've got less dense housing, do not pay for themselves. The revenue that we get off of single-family housing is not something that pays for the services that are needed to provide for that residence, whether it's the roadway to get there, whether it's the pipes to get there, whether it's the police and the fire services. So I really want us to make sure that we are addressing that because that is something that we have some control over, at least so that we're not digging ourselves into a hole of our own doing further. We also need to talk to the state about shared revenue and all of that. But I think it's important to recognize that right now, our expenses per acre are probably more than our revenue per acre on many of the properties in the area, and that's something that we need to understand. So, going to these questions, no, I think we need to continue with two years of Metro Flex. I think it's an equity issue for our elderly and our students and people who can't drive with disabilities. It's also a cost of living issue, and that's something that residents have told us in our surveys that is really, really important to them. I will also note that the pilot program showed high usage in the denser areas, and so I'll just throw it in there. I think we should talk to Metro Flex about whether keeping Squawk in the mix is right or whether adding the Highlands into it would be right. If we're looking at what some of the highest-use areas are, there are areas where we've got affordable housing, like up in Tallis, and we've got a lot of that up in the Highlands that isn't covered by this. And so this would be a great way to help improve the lives of people who are about a mile and a half away from transit up in the Highlands. So, I'll just put that out there. Light rail study, I agree with Councilmember Martz and Hunt. There's time, so I'm fine to postpone this. I'm frankly cynical with all of the big budget issues with Sound Transit that we're going to keep on that time schedule, and so I'm not feeling all that urgent to put our money down on something like that when we have a lot of other urgent, more urgent needs. I also think we know our residents and we have the direct link there. We don't need to pay for a study to have robust community conversations about where the preferred location should be. And I believe that the actual studies about a viability of a location should be a cost that Sound Transit bears, not the local community. So I would prefer that our focus be on the community engagement side of things, and I don't think that needs to cost a $400,000 study. Regarding the housing and parking study, I'm actually to, I'm okay to postpone it for a few reasons. First, we're doing a lot with middle housing. If this was going to delay middle housing, I would absolutely be in favor of funding it, but because we're already moving forward on that, I feel pretty okay. Also, the state-level structured parking change would have a huge impact on MFT viability, and so I agree with Councilmember Hall that we should look back at the Eco Northwest report because there was data in there about what levers would make that potentially viable. So I think there is a possibility that we could make a tweak to a program using in-house staff and our information that we already have, combined with the state laws, because we're not getting anything out of it now. So making a tweak to it isn't, you know, necessarily going to have a worse impact. So that would be my preference there. And then the fleet fund, I really have a hard time putting so much money into this when we have these other areas of need, particularly the Metro Flex. So I would prefer to take the funds needed for Metro Flex out of the fleet fund and delay some of those fleet items as the administration sees fit. I think we can find the savings here and we've got other priorities. I also think we really need to dive into this and understand what are our goals, what are we achieving here? You know, I don't even know, are we looking at EVs in other areas? Do our investments here match what the community expectation is? So I really want to know that before I'm willing to necessarily plop down the full 3.2 million. I think we can pull a little bit out of that in order to fund the Metro Flex. And then I will also say, yes, we made huge progress on the pavement management, especially on the sidewalk portion of things, the concrete management. We already have a huge cut to that program in this budget. I don't think we can go much further on that. So I would prefer to keep the pavement management program as it is. I am okay to potentially look at open space acquisition, depending on what the information is there, whether we've used that funding, what the fund level is there. So I'd be open to that idea, but I think my top preference is to pull it out of fleet fund. Okay, before I go back to administration, anybody, second round of comments? Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Thank you. A comment and a question that I thought of during the break. We've talked about Metro Flex being an equity issue, and one thing I think that we need to look at is, you know, all of our young people under 18 use that service for free, and that's mandated by the state of Washington. And our senior citizens like myself have cards that give us a ride for $1 instead of the $2.50. And Metro also has a program where low-income people may be able to get either rides for free or reduced rides. And so, the question that was asked about how much does it cost per ride, I want to be sure when we're getting those figures and looking at how expensive it is, that if a high percentage of the people using that service in Issaquah fit into those categories, then it's going to be a highly subsidized service and it's probably going to be a very expensive service. So I just want to be sure that we take those things into consideration as we're gathering the data about how much we're spending per ride. We are helping the people in our community who need that subsidy, and the cost therefore may be quite a bit higher than an average bus ride would be.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Note on the open space fund, when we get the information back about how it's being drawn down, my understanding from our previous budget conversations and when this has come up in the past is that a large, or a major reason why we keep that fund is so that we can be nimble. So it is not that we spend it down regularly, but rather that we have that money. For one, a opportunity comes up, as has come up several times in the last, you know, seven years, where there's a large purchase, it requires a match from the city, it requires us to be nimble. And so, for me, the information about how regularly we're drawing that down wouldn't be compelling because it's there to do that matching, which allows us to make sure that we are taking opportunities to protect our open space.
Any other second round comments before I go to the administration and ask if they have everything they need? Does the administration have everything they need from this conversation?
We do, very much, thank you. I think that the mayor, however, wanted to make a few remarks.
Okay.
I'll be quick. We're looking a little tired tonight, so thank you for this meeting. I guess the first thing I want to say is that your comments and your suggestions about where we should be looking were super helpful. So we did get a chance to talk with our interim CFO at the break, and great conversation tonight. One thing I wanted to address just quickly is, one of the things my administration has been trying to do is give staff the tools they need to provide you with better information about facilities and asset management, and you have graciously approved those requests and given them the tools they need. The painful part is the numbers aren't good when we're hearing them. So I do understand why following a consultant's recommendation on what we should be doing with our fleet can seem rather shocking, but the reality is, this is the first time we've actually daylighted it. And so thank you for the tools and thank you for your conversation and your suggestions that we sharpen our pencils and take another look at that. But you have provided the administration's team with much better resources in being able to track our finances, our facilities, and the other assets that we have, so I'm very grateful for that. So I just want to thank you tonight. Wally's not here to tell you that this was a great conversation, so I'm standing in for Wally, but also just to thank our interim CFO. I had thought that Councilmember Martz was here in 2010 when there was another round of very hard conversations for council- of very hard conversations for council, but he wasn't. And so this is really the first time this body has had to deal with something like this in 14 years, including the layoffs, and thank you all for mentioning the fact that that, those 12% cuts have been extremely challenging and a very difficult time for staff. So thank you for mentioning that. But you're doing, you're providing some great conversation on what you have to balance out in order to make your choices to make this balanced budget work. So very appreciative and thanks for all your work tonight.
Okay, so assuming all of that stands true, the administration should have what it's need. So we've got, go to the order if anybody has anything. And with that, I will say we are adjourned at 8:52 PM. Thank you.